It is 4:30 and this joint meeting is called to order. Waller.
Yes, I'd like to call roll for the Planning and Zoning Commission. Tricia Byram.
Here.
David Jones.
Here.
Jared Harmon.
Here.
Ruston Super.
Here.
Bill Morgan.
Here.
Jim Brown.
Here.
Bob Waller, we have a quorum.
All right, good, good. Okay, Mark and Monica, I'm going to turn it to you. Let me say also that for members of the public comment is not generally allowed or is not allowed for this meeting as a workshop, but obviously those on P&amp;Z, City Council, and those who are members of the committee.
Mr. Mayor, I don't know if this is an appropriate time, but maybe I could just, can I just have a quick second?
Okay.
Okay. I just would like for our consultants to know, we voted this morning to ask you to look at our sign ordinance as quickly and as quickly as you can and get back to us sooner than soon. We need it badly, so if you guys would put that in your bonnet and work on it, I'd appreciate it.
Mr. McDaniel mentioned that to us and I believe will be working diligently to bring that to the front burner.
Thank you.
Yes.
Appreciate it.
Mark, welcome.
Well, thank you very much.
You and Monica, you all have kind of gotten to know us.
Yeah.
We're starting to.
We started to.
Yeah.
So, thank you very much for bringing the two bodies together today. We appreciate this opportunity to go through the work that we have been going through related to the overhaul of the zoning ordinance and your codes. So, today, we wanted to go through a recap of the CRC, the Code Review Committee work that's been done to date. We want to walk through some highlights of a draft. This is a first draft that you have in front of you based upon the input that we've been getting from the committee so far, as well as looking at other things like state regulations and those types of things to make sure that this new alignment with those requirements as well. We'd like to go through this presentation as quickly as possible and then open it up for discussion to make sure that we get through all pieces of it and then talk some about next steps and where we're headed with things. So, as we talk about the recap of the CRC work today, keep in mind that the CRC has met four times. Kickoff meeting in November, their latest meeting was February 25th where they went through and drafted this code and we actually came back in and made some changes to it based upon some of the comments that we got from CRC at that meeting. Before we go right into some of the CRC feedback and some of the things that led to the code, we wanted to take a little step back as to how we started off the process. We had the meeting with the CRC and back in, I guess it was November timeframe, we started off with a series of stakeholder interviews. There were individual stakeholders as well as small groups. We were here for a three-day period, back-to-back meetings with stakeholders. Really, the intent was to talk to people that are utilizing, working with your codes on a day-in and day-out basis to see what are the issues that they're seeing, the things that they would like to see addressed in order to make them a little bit more business-friendly for the community going forward. So, some of the highlights of what we heard from them, I'm not going to go through every one of them, but the key thing we heard across the board was the code is cumbersome, difficult to navigate, unclear, and requires too much interpretation. And as a part of that, the thing that they added on to it was interpretations lead to inconsistencies and a lack of confidence in the process. And I think that's the opposite of what you want to see going on with your codes. You want people in the development community, people working with them, to feel like everybody's being treated the same and understand what's expected of them when they come in for development in the community. They added on in the new code, they wanted it to be reasonable, logical, and they emphasized, don't add too many new requirements to the code. So, additionally with the highlights, we're now on page five if you're following along in the handout. They'll say that there are too many zoning districts and that's one of the things that's complicating the code and many of the districts are too similar. Too many uses require a CUP and the process is difficult to go through to get the CUPs. They suggested that reasonable overlay standards or guidelines or a mix of those for downtown and the river corridor might be acceptable. We should look at utilizing that to incorporate some of the ideas from Curville 2050 in those specific areas. The idea of a reasonable tree preservation ordinance was accepted by the majority of the folks we talked to. Obviously, our challenge then becomes what is that bar for reasonable? And so, that's going to take a lot of back and forth in the community to determine what that is if something moves forward. So, there were several goals that came out of those interviews, just that handful of things that I just pointed out. One of the key goals that came out, and we developed the goals, we then worked with the Code Review Committee to refine those goals, see if there were some additional things we needed to add, because at the end of the day, we want to take the ordinance that's developed and bring it back to see if it's in alignment with those goals, to see how well we accomplished the things that we were after. So, number one, create a user-friendly ordinance. And that means simplify, streamline, and clarify the code, revise outdated standards and uses, address inconsistencies, and minimize the need for interpretation by staff. That's the best way to make sure that everybody's treated equitably, that you don't have one staff member one day interpreting it one way and another staff member another way the next day. You want it to be as clear as possible. Minimize nonconformities resulting from the new code and zoning map. At the end of the day, we want to make sure we haven't put anybody in a situation being a nonconforming use in the future that they were today. We want to make sure that we're getting things aligned with the new code and that's going to take a lot of calibration to make that happen. Support the Curville 2050 vision, the Comprehensive Plan anticipates uses that were not accommodated in the existing code. So, what we did after working through those goals and clarifying them with the CRC is, I guess, meeting before last, we came back with a few of the issues and implications and got them to weigh in on how those things should be addressed in the Curville updated zoning. So, zoning should be supportive of the Curville 2050 Comprehensive Plans. Our recommendation that the committee supported was to develop new districts and revise the regulations in a manner that it does align with that 2050 vision. For the most part, if you recall from the 2050 vision, most of the community stays the same. There were some key focus areas and so it really comes down to how do we handle some of those key focus areas with changes in the code going forward. The second one is there are too many zoning districts. Most district names, including those with geographic references, do not indicate the types of uses that are allowed. More commonly, what you see in communities is there may be a retail 1, retail 2, retail 3 district and you can tell by the name that retail is accommodated within those districts. When you have geographic districts, it makes it a little bit more difficult. You kind of really start to open the book and dig down to see if what you want to do in that area is allowed. So, the recommendation that the committee supported was consolidating similar districts, eliminate those not being used, and then rename districts to reflect the types of uses such as retail, commercial, industrial, manufacturing. The next one is color coding on the map and we're starting to look at the map now. Color coding is not consistent with planning standards. Again, when you have geographic districts, there are a whole bunch of different color variations and they weren't in alignment with what I would think when I look at a map, if there's a red color, it indicates a commercial use, or a gray color, an industrial use. And that's kind of the industry standard. And what we found is that's not necessarily the case. Somebody from out of town may come and misinterpret your map right off of that. So, that was one thing they suggested looking at. In the area of CUPs, issue, well, I'm sorry, the land use chart, incomplete exclusive uses. So, there are a lot of new uses that are coming out in today's world that cities are starting to see that weren't necessarily accommodated in your code. So, then you need interpretations again. Some uses were functioning like categories rather than a specific use and too many required a CUP. So, we wanted to expand and update the list of uses. That's one area we expanded to make it more clear what uses were allowed in each district so that there wouldn't be a lot of interpretation. And then to reduce the number of CUPs, allowing many of those uses by right were possible. And then, next one was specific use districts. A lot of the activities that the specific use districts were outlining were things that maybe weren't consistent with things that people wanted to see in Curville anyway. They weren't necessarily a part of the vision 2050. So, we suggested eliminating that section and review those activities as unlisted uses by CUP. So, if somebody comes in with a use that's not on your use list, there's still a way that it can be considered and accommodated if it's determined that you want to do that. So, really, the next thing we want to do is have Monica go through chapter by chapter the key aspects of the code and where the code is led based upon the interaction that we've had with the committee. I'm going to tell you today, it's not perfect because it has not been vetted with you and it's not been vetted with the community. This is that first draft and you and the community will have additional opportunities for comments, but we want to get as much comment and understand where we're headed in the right direction and where we need to bring some things back to the committee for them to think about in more detail as we move forward. Monica?
I thought it would be a good idea to sort of start with the approach that we took based upon discussions with the community and with staff. So, we decided to, and I think Mark mentioned this maybe earlier, preserve the existing code where possible, not change it just to be changing it, but if there's something that works, keep that in place, to add some standard zoning code verbiage, which is, you know, not a huge deal, but it just needs to be in mostly in the administrative side. Reorganize a little bit to improve the flow of the document. Expand the list of permitted uses needed so that staff didn't have to make the interpretations that Martin mentioned in a sec ago. And also, add definitions for all of those uses, especially the new ones. Develop a more comprehensive and consistent district regulations format so an individual doesn't have to go flipping through multiple chapters of the code in order to find the information that they need. Within the district regulations, rather than basing setbacks on uses, base them on the zoning district, that's something I've never seen that before in a zoning ordinance. If a building starts out as a funeral home and then turns into another use, then there are two different setbacks, building setbacks that apply, which makes it very hard to reoccupy buildings. So, that's something that we can fix going forward. Look for ways to address the affordability, the housing affordability challenge that you guys have expressed to us occurs here in Curville. And also, create some new districts to help us get that Curville 2050 plan. Right. As I mentioned, I think the only way to get through this is just start at the beginning and plow through it until the end. And so, we're going to start with the first few chapters, first few articles. And they're just really administrative provisions, nothing exciting, kind of housekeeping sorts of things like the title of the ordinance, its intent and purpose, forming with other codes such as the Comprehensive Plan, the Thoroughfare Plan, those sorts of things. And also, something that I thought would be handy for you is a description of a way to handle applications, zoning applications that come in that are in conflict with your Comprehensive Plan, because you don't want to miss an important opportunity for your community because it was not something that the plan could have anticipated. So, there's language in there to allow you to improve or approve something that's not in conformance with the plan and then come back and fix the plan later. Then there's definitions of basic terms and concepts as well as every item in the land use table, definition section. The articles on the P&amp;Z and the ZBA, one of the things we wanted to do was standardize the content generally between the two boards where one board had a provision that addressed a certain topic like how the board was initially created. That should be in the board's regulation. So, that was kind of a housekeeping issue. One of the things that was discussed by the CRC was the issue of the fact that P&amp;Z has alternate and regular members at this point in time. And so, the board's or the committee's desire was to make all members regular members instead of having five regular members and two alternates. So, under that scenario, then a quorum would be four. Under four and, what was it, five and two, quorum would be three. Under, everybody is a member, full member of quorum will be four. Now, the ZBA, again, because this is the way the committee discussion ended, they'll continue to be five members and two alternates, but one of the things that was important to everybody on the committee was that everybody could participate in the discussion. Now, because the board is a five-member board, if everybody's there, five plus two alternates, that's seven people, so only the regular members vote. But at least everyone can participate in discussion and that actually helps you grow your board members as well. So, the alternates will be better full members when the time comes. Does that, in order for a case to be considered by the ZBA, 75% of the members have to be present, so not a simple majority, but 75%. So, that means four of the five members would continue to be part in order here of ZBA. Except for the fact that it's clear now that everyone participates in discussion, whereas in your current ordinance, that is not the case. We clarified the duties and powers of each board. There's nothing really out of the ordinary or new there. And then some discussion of how the board has organized its officers, meetings and records, the Open Meetings Act, which in the past, no, the Open Meetings Act, which was in there. And then something that had been called quasi-judicial authority or something to that effect, which is really rules concerning ex parte contacts, contacts outside of the meeting, the official meeting. And so, it's got a new title and is... Appeals of Administrative Decisions, those go to the ZBA and that's covered specially as it is in state law. So, the process for requesting a variance to a zoning ordinance and the process for requesting a variance to a city official's interpretation of a requirement are both laid out in there and they're essentially the same as in the standard code and the... I think I would call terribly new there. Zoning districts, okay. We start out with just a discussion of the fact that, you know, there will be this many zoning districts, et cetera, and that some uses will have supplementary requirements. We'll get to that in a second. We start off talking about newly annexed areas and how those are zoned. One option is that a property owner can bring in a request for a specific zoning category at the time that annexation is requested. Another option, if someone doesn't have an idea exactly of what needs to, or what they want to occur there, is we've created a new zoning category called ag or culture or ag. And so, that in most communities is kind of a holding category for newly annexed properties, so that would be available here for that purpose as well as if someone is doing it. Zoning district boundaries, that can be a very simple process if it's clear that there's a, you know, a property line or a street line, right-of-way line, or a creek or whatever. Very often, that's how a zoning district boundary is formed and that's pretty simple. But if it's not that clear, then the director will be making interpretations in their own opinion. And again, that's not, and they're kind of a way of doing that. We were able to cut down the number of districts from the current 49 to 17. Your 49 include 27 geographical districts, 11 in the central or downtown core areas, six residential districts, some special districts and PV. We're down to seven residential, four non-residential, and six special. This is going to make the ordinance itself, the code itself, much less intimidating to developers and property owners and hopefully that will then just make things easier for So, the overall strategy was to categorize all those 17 districts into three separate areas, the non-residential and special. The residential districts, we tried to maintain the existing area regulations as much as possible or even relax them a little bit because, again, we're trying to avoid creating nonconforming situations. We took the same basic approach for the non-residential zoning categories. One of the things we did was eliminate specific side and rear yard setback requirements. Currently, you have those and they vary by district, but really, I think that's an unnecessary kind of a requirement. So, we eliminated those with the exception of properties that abut single-family. And there, we have added some new requirements that we hope you will consider that have to do with limiting height adjacent to single-family. And that's just to protect the residential districts. That's all that is about and we have some graphics that demonstrate that in this. The issue that I mentioned earlier to you where area regulations setbacks particularly are currently based on use rather than zoning district, we're taking the opposite approach. Which the strategy there varies by district, then it'll become clear to you why as we get to those. That's sort of our overall approach. Now, here's a visual image of how the number of zoning districts has shrunk. And so, there are not only fewer districts, but we're using the industry standard color coding system now. For the residential districts, we've created a new category. So, I'm sorry, I'm having to lean up against here, my back's bothering me. So, we created a new category called Estate Residential. That's actually an outgrowth of our Curville 2050 process. Doesn't mean that that category is necessarily going to be assigned to any property, but it's available. It will be available to properties going forward. For example, if a property were to be annexed into the city and a developer wanted to create an environment with one-acre lots, here's the zoning category that would allow him to do that. And then that means that anybody that buys in there knows that within that area, all the lots should be one acre. And that's things that sometimes deed restrictions cover, but there's no reason it can't be done here because you can enforce deed restrictions. All right? You can enforce them as the city. The R1 district remains largely the same, but the current code has a 6,000-square-foot minimum lot requirement and the committee felt that 5,000 square feet was appropriate. So, their recommendation at this point in time is that the minimum lot size in R1 be 5,000 square feet. The R1A district, you also had at present time, which is an R1's type of lot, but it allows an accessory apartment on the same lot as the main building. The biggest change here is that right now, the way your code is worded, that accessory unit or that accessory apartment has to be within the main dwelling and there was some desire on the part of, well, it started actually as a staff discussion, that there'd be the flexibility for that unit to be in a freestanding structure as well. So, it could, you know, it could be done either way. The caveat on the freestanding structure was that it not occupy more than half of the area that is backyard. All right? So, you don't want to, you know, you don't want to slam it up too much with structure. So, that's the one thing that seemed appropriate in order to, as a trade-off for that flexibility for a freestanding unit. R2 is much like your residential cluster district today, so it allows a variety of housing types in a single zoning category. The 5,000-square-foot single-family lot is one option, but now there are also clearer regulations for patio homes, townhomes, and duplexes. One of the things that we learned in our stakeholder interviews, this is one of the areas where the developers, the home builders were, they just couldn't figure out what the code was for those types of uses. So, now, there's a table, it's very clear and that should not be an issue going forward under the format we've proposed. R3 is the multifamily district and under the draft code, it would be exclusively for multifamily. Right now, you could do single-family in it as well. The thought there basically is that, for one thing, multifamily land prices probably are going to rule out the development of single-family on attractive land that's got multifamily zoning. But also, it does help plan for utilities, transportation, streets, and that sort of thing if you know that the likelihood is, you know, it's going to be multifamily, multiple units as opposed to a single unit on a piece of property. RM is residential mix and it's basically the R2 district, the one that allows a variety of housing types plus manufactured housing, just as your current code does for that district. And then the final residential type of category is RT residential transition and that allows both residential and non-residential uses in that zoning district. You know, and you know kind of how that works here. It's sort of a transitionary zone between single-family neighborhoods and more commercial neighborhoods. We've done a couple of things. Well, actually, the building size is limited to 3,000 square feet, so the non-residential uses can't, you know, become too imposing compared to the surrounding residential uses. And there are a few design types of requirements already in the code. We didn't really mess with those, we just left them alone. And they basically say that the commercial buildings need to look residential in terms of their character and their scale and that kind of thing, more specific than what I just said about that. And then there were some exemptions for churches and schools because they're not going to be in their 3,000-square-foot building. All right, the non-residential districts, you don't have any of these categories right now by name. The C1 neighborhood commercial is based upon your most restrictive existing, what is it, retail and personal service districts. There was a minimum size per building of 3,000 square feet there and discussions with staff, they felt 5,000 was more appropriate and the committee didn't raise any question regarding that. But there's also been a, and that's per building, so then in addition, they suggested a limitation on the total square footage per lot of 10,000 square feet. We also, staff also felt it was a good idea to allow some drive-through facilities on certain types of businesses, but to get a conditional use permit for those, because that can create, you know, a unique set of problems. If you have to go through a CUP and you get a review process ahead of time, then you can fend those things out or tell a business no, it's not going to work here. C2 is light commercial, so it allows all the uses in C1 plus a few others. That's where you start getting into your light auto-related uses like car sales, minor repair, car wash. The drive-through service becomes a use by right, not requiring a CUP once you get into C2. And then, total square footage on a single lot of all buildings of 100,000 square feet. Your current retail zoning does that to some extent. There's a building of the amount of square footage allowed per trap in your, I guess it's limited, and then retail 1 and retail 2 or something. I can't remember exactly your categories, but anyway, so this is not inconsistent with the current system. Then C3, general commercial, it allows all the uses leading up to that in C1 and C2, so to that extent, it's cumulative. But then it starts allowing the heavier auto uses like the more major repair and the dealerships. It allows building contractor uses and those all, you kind of imagine, are going to involve likely some outdoor activity. Car title loan, check cashing, payday lending, those are not quite the same as other financial institutions, so we save those for C3. Hotel motel, movie theater, parking structures, and then some other uses involving outdoor storage. So, it also doesn't really have a cap on the amount of square footage per lot. All right? Then we have industrial and manufacturing as a separate category and it allows all the things that you would normally think of as industrial, manufacturing, warehouse, distribution, those sorts of things. Agricultural uses as well, agricultural service uses, some of the heavier commercial uses like the auto dealerships and major repair, but not all of them, but some of them. And then, like equipment rental, contractor storage are things that are heavier by nature and so they are in an industrial category with other heavier uses. Now, we did allow for a few support-type uses for people that might be working there and those would include restaurants and banks and those kinds of things. Now, in general, setbacks and building size requirements have been relaxed a little bit to allow some flexi- to allow some flexibility and also, as we said, to minimize non-conformities. But we here, as wanted to be sure, these are the districts where those protections for the single-family start kicking in, and those have to do with setback and height. And again, I promise we'll talk about those some more later. So, then, six special districts, the downtown arts and culture district, mixed use and development, public and institutional, airport, and agriculture. And each of them has its own sort of, as you can imagine, special purpose and set of standards. So, the downtown arts and culture district is pretty much what you think of today as the downtown core and the CBD, kind of generally shown in that map there. So, there, there is an emphasis on walkability and pedestrian-oriented sort of features and an environment that's supported for arts and culture by the mix of uses and the characteristics of the open areas and that sort of thing, just like the Kerrville 2050 plan envisioned for that part of town. It allows a mix of residential and non-residential uses that sort of would build each other or support each other, and those could take place within the overall district as well as within an individual building. Could be both types of use. There are some flexible parking requirements for this area. We'll talk about new multifamily ratios shortly, but no onsite parking would be required in what's called the downtown core, just like your current code has it. And then, we're suggesting a more standard across-the-board ratio for other uses because it becomes so difficult to reoccupy buildings. If some, you know, if it was a doctor's office in a, you know, a building with retail at the ground floor and apartments above, and you use one ratio for a doctor's office and you use a different ratio for a restaurant, it just makes it really, really hard to keep those buildings occupied. And keeping those buildings occupied is going to be very important to keep the multifamily viable. They just, they just feed off of each other. So, we've got, and this is, again, this is not an uncommon way to address that situation in an area like that or in a mixed-use area for that matter. And then, the other thing is that in this downtown area, you already have a number of older buildings that are pulled closer to the street. So, in this particular district, there's a different sort of an emphasis on the relationship and the location of the building versus the street. So, and this is, this is also in your current code. In your current code, you can, you can have a zero-foot setback in the downtown area. And we are suggesting that not only you have, you know, the flexibility of going to zero, but that you'd be required to set it no more than 10 feet back to maintain the environment that's, you know, that started down there with the old buildings with a little bit of flexibility if you want to do a special corner feature or something like that. Again, this is not, this is not a groundbreaking type of a way to approach a downtown situation. It's very common. All right. Mixed use. This is a new district that was created because if you'll recall, some of those catalyst areas in the Kerrville 2050 plan did envision, not all of them, there were 11, clearly not all of them, but in appropriate locations, they envisioned some types of mixed-use environments. And again, those uses could be mixed not only on a single lot, but within a single building. You could do it either way or both. Setbacks vary from 10 to 15 feet based upon the type of roadway that's adjacent at the, if there's a highway adjacent to you, and a little bit more, but you don't have that setback situation too often because you have limitations on where you can access tech doc facilities. A reduced parking requirement because if you, if you live somewhere, then you're going to be able to walk to some services that you would normally have to drive to if they're right there nearby. Open space, we're suggesting, and this is, this is going to be something new, not unprecedented, but new for you guys, something to think about, where you have buildings that include, mixed-use buildings that include residential units. We're suggesting that you ask the property owner or require the property owner to provide some open space that's equal to 8% of the footprint of the building that contains the residential units. That open space would be provided, it would be accessible to the public, be maintained by the owner of the building, not by the city. And the idea there is just that people that live there have some convenient place to, you know, to go out, to go outside. I mean, everybody, everybody needs a little break, right? So, it's some area nearby where they could, they could get to it easily. 8%. And when I say footprint, I mean like the first floor, draw a square or whatever around the first floor, multiply times 8%, and that's how much open space they would have to provide somewhere on the lot. And then, one of the things that came up in the discussion with the committee was that that open space needed to have certain characteristics associated with it. For example, it needs to be properly located so that it could be seen, you know what I'm saying? So that it's safer that way. It needs to be lit, fenced perhaps. So, all that would be part of the review of the plan to develop a property that includes that type of open space. PD, another special district, you have that one already. I just want to remind everybody that the purpose of a PD is not to avoid existing zoning regulations, it's to make a better development. All right? Sometimes, it's used as a, you know, a way to skirt requirements. And we say that in the code. We're suggesting minimum five acres for a PD application. And in exchange for flexible requirements, because this is basically, if you want to call it this, I hate to, I hate to call this, but it's really what it is. It's a fill-in-the-blank sort of a zoning category. You have to tell the city what front yard you want, what side yard you want, what parking ratio you intend to use, et cetera. So, in exchange for that type of flexibility, you're asked to provide a little bit more information upfront. All right? And a concept plan specifically. So, once a PD is adopted with a concept plan, then there are ways that you can go in as a developer and make some minor amendments with some, with certain restrictions. For example, you can increase up to 30% of the total building area that the concept plan reflects without having to go back through the big zoning process. Or increase the number of residential units by up to 30%. You cannot decrease the setbacks or decrease the parking ratio. No big changes to access and circulation either on the site or to the adjacent roadway. Now, that doesn't mean you can't, you know, you can't modify it somewhat, but no major changes. Okay? So, if you have a driveway that's center of a block, you don't suddenly move it to, so that it's within, you know, half that distance of a block if it's a major driveway. Those kinds of things that can be reviewed by staff. So, no substantial changes, doesn't mean no changes, but no substantial changes to access or circulation. No change in permitted uses. Change of permitted uses would need to go back through the process. Same process as for the original application. Now, any major amendment, if you exceed those 30% limitations, if you do decrease the setbacks or you want to propose a decreased parking ratio, fewer parking spaces, you do go back through the process with a major amendment to the concept plan, just like the original zoning request. The public and institutional district, it accommodates public facilities and gathering places. One change that we made, the OPI district allowed single-family, and we're not totally eliminating it. Dormitories at a university or a rectory or a parsonage is still okay, but otherwise, we did take that out as a permitted use. Also, wanted to remind you that worship facilities and public schools are actually permitted in any zoning district. This is not the only place that they can be constructed. There is probably more leeway here in terms of setbacks because we've, we've created a very flexible set of setbacks for these uses because they're so, they're so varied and they're, it's so hard to anticipate exactly what might happen. So, the one thing we do want to do though is protect adjacent single-family again from these same types of activities because they can have impacts on adjacent properties. Screening would be required as well, except worship facilities and public schools would not have to provide screening. And no outdoor storage because that can kind of get out of control for, for uses of this type. So, that's public and institutional. Airport district, there, there's going to be kind of two types of airport district property. One that is actually the airport and then airport district property that's nearby, so it's not owned by the airport. So, on the airport property, we reduce setbacks and we're not missing, you know, we're not requiring specific parking. We're kind of letting that thing be itself. But for property that's zoned AD but not on the airport proper, we have suggested uses that are compatible with the airport. Some of them are industrial, many of those by CUP, and you, you'll kind of need to want to watch, I think, to see if that's, if the CUP process is necessary as time goes by. And then, some service uses for people who might work or visit there, again, like banks, convenience store, drugstore, those kinds of things. Setbacks would be the same as in the industrial district. 45-foot height limitation, which I believe is what's in the zoning ordinance now, plus anything that FAA may require. And then, again, if that hap, if you happen to be adjacent to residential and you're zoned AD, then the restrictions regarding setback in height and screening. And then, the final special district is the AG Agriculture District. And we talked about it earlier when we were speaking of newly annexed property, but it also accommodates agricultural uses, minimum five acres there. Area and height regulations, the same as R1. And agricultural structures are given a little bit more leeway in terms of height than, than other structures, other types of structures. So, you might have a windmill or a silo or something that's a little bit taller than a house could be. So, that's sort of a summary of some of the characteristics of the zoning districts. Now, let's talk about the format of the actual chapters or articles themselves. Every district will have a paragraph that's a purpose statement. There will be a general description, just a very general description of the uses, and then, there will be some discussion in most districts of the area and height. As I mentioned in PD, you, as an applicant, would propose all of those. Otherwise, they're laid out for you. And then, depending upon the district, you may have certain other types of characteristics that are, that are regulated. Access limitations in certain zoning districts. For example, residential opening onto a major roadway is not a good idea. Allowances for encroachments like by bay windows and chimneys and stuff in residential areas. So, the characteristic and where there are a specific language is going to vary based upon a combination of things. Oh, so, okay, so let's look at the table. And this is basically the standard format that will be under each of the zoning categories for the area and height regulations. You see, the table includes the title of the district, and then, you have lot size, lot width, front setback, side setback, and you'll see that it's different on a corner lot, side street than on an interior lot that's not adjacent to a roadway, and then, minimum rear setback, and building height and parking. Most of the parking really is actually somewhere else, but in the residential districts, we're able to put it up in this table. Elsewhere, there's a, for non-residential uses, there's a whole nother section on parking. And certain districts have some special requirements. Remember, I mentioned to you that in the R1A district, we had some special requirements on the accessory apartment use. And then, in a patio home district, you have to have an easement for overhang on the next-door neighbor's property, just some stuff like that. So, all those are going to be covered in the article specific to that very zoning district. Now, let's talk about that setback in height or height setback set of regulations that we're suggesting that you consider. In general, they're going to apply to non-residential and many special, special district properties adjacent to single-family. Okay? So, and when we talk about residential in the, or single-family in the, in the coming slides, we're talking about residential estate, the R1 and 1A and R2, at least the, you know, the patio home, townhome duplex, those uses. RM, but not for manufactured housing, and, because your current code seems to treat manufactured housing just, development's just a little bit different than, and then in mixed use or PD where the development is single-family patio home, townhome duplex. So, all that same set of single-family type uses. All right? So, here's how it works. There is a 25-foot setback required between the commercial building, I'm losing my green dot, but between the commercial building and the residential property line. All right? And that's indicated by that black, let's assume it's a fence, okay? So, minimum 25-foot setback to the commercial property or commercial structure. All right? Then, at that 25-foot setback, the building can automatically be 35 feet in height. Doesn't have to be, but it can go that tall. And at the committee's request, we are allowing windows, but only at the first-floor level. All right? And again, the idea is that the commercial property not be imposing on the residential property.
Is that going to be all residential? RT included? What constitutes residential?
I have to look, well, it was those, no, it was those districts I mentioned to you right here in this slide. RE, 11A2, RM except for manufactured housing, mixed use or PD where it's single-family development. So, not RT because that would be a tough one, right? And then, at 50 feet, if you wanted to save your building and set it back at 50 feet, thank you, whoever's pointing, then you can go to 35 feet and no restriction on the windows. So, you put the windows in the second floor, second or third, if you can get three floors in that. And then, beyond that, beyond 100 feet, you can actually go to 45 feet of building height with no limitation on windows. So, and you can go even more. You see the, you see the triangle beyond that? You could go even taller if you will provide another foot of setback, another foot of distance for every one foot of height you want to achieve beyond that 45-foot limit. Okay? Understand the concept anyway? All right? So, that's what we're suggesting that you consider. Again, the idea is to protect your residential property from commercial, commercial encroachment. All right? Screening adjacent to residential, again, in general, it applies where you have non-residential adjacent to residential property. And by residential, it's the same set of districts, single-family residential orientation or mixed use or PD with the, with single-family development. And screening options are six to eight feet in height, whatever you do. And your choices are solid masonry or solid weather-resistant wood, and we discussed this language quite a bit in our committee meeting to make sure that that was going to be clear and enforceable by staff. And the, would have the option of combining solid sections of masonry or wood with solid sections of landscaping. Chain link or ornamental fencing, which could include decorative metal or vinyl fencing. And that could be done with landscaping as well. If you were to use chain link, no slats in it, except in the public and institutional district. And then, it could be that a developer could indicate, convince the planning commission and council, PNC and council, that there are physical features that serve as a buffer, so there's not a need for any new kind of man-made physical buffer. For example, you might have big woods, or you might have some sort of a slope that achieves screening without having to do new construction. Outdoor storage, and here, we would be talking about materials, inventory, supplies, that sort of thing. It would be allowed in C2, C3, and industrial and the airport, and would be required adjacent to single-family. All right? The land use table itself, and there's, there still would be a land use table. When you go to a zoning district, it's not going to include the list of every single use. It's going to give a general description and refer you back to this table. So, here's what the new table looks like. All the districts, the 17 districts are divided into, as we talked about earlier, residential Uh, all the districts, the seventeen districts are divided into, as we talked about earlier, residential, non-residential, special. And then if it's a use that's permitted, you'll see a P. If it's a C U P use, you'll see a C. If it's blank, that means not permitted. Sometimes you'll see a note that's, uh, explained in the column to the far right in this slide. And it may end up eventually underneath the table, but that's how it's laid out, all right? Um, now, there's, there are going to be a few uses that, that because of the uniqueness of the, some of their characteristics, they may have some extra requirements. For example, uh, most of the uses involving fuel sales or, and, you know, uh, large numbers of vehicles sitting around, even car washes. Because, uh, you have your water source right here locally, there are distances that are going to be required setback distances from flood plains and the Nimitz impoundment area. So to keep your water supply as, uh, as clean as possible. And, um, if you'll think about it, when you drive around town, um, gas stations, a lot of times the pumps and the pump islands are closer to the street than other buildings in the surrounding area, again, not uncommon, and those provisions are called out as well. Many storage facilities, there's some, there's some very minimal design requirements, basically, uh, not permitted to have just like a flat blank wall adjacent to the street. It's just a little bit of architectural interest and some suggestions as to how that might be achieved. Uh, facilities with drive-through or drive-in service, uh, we are going to have some new stacking requirements and, uh, some graphics to go along with those. And, uh, from the current code, uh, we, and we really didn't change these that much, daycare services, group homes, community gardens. We moved home occupations back here. All the home occupation, uh, regulations appeared to be in the definition section, which is not where they should be. So we moved them back here because it made perfect sense to do that. So we didn't change a whole lot, but, uh, we, we did, uh, we did put them back here. Uh, there are some regulations about manufactured homes and that sort of thing, again, already in your code. I don't think we did anything to these. Um, and there are some uses like the wind energy systems, sexually oriented businesses, antennas, that, uh, in your current code, it just refers you to another part of the city, you know, municipal code, and that's all, that's all we did as well. So it's, but it's all in there. Um, all right, so that's, we're kind of through the discussion of zoning districts and special tweaks that go along with them. Uh, zoning changes and C U Ps. Uh, for both types of requests, uh, we thought we might suggest a couple of things that might make your, um, well, let me, let me back up one. Uh, there is really quite a list of requirements that are necessary in order for someone to make an application even. I mean, even some engineering work. And that's a lot to ask of, of a developer who doesn't even know if he's going to be able to do what he wants to do. That means he doesn't have to do it, just doesn't, it means he doesn't have to do it to quite the level of detail at this stage of the game. So, uh, rather than in the, in this part of the code, having a whole detailed list of requirements, we're going to highlight some things that are going to be necessary no matter what. The full application form, a description of the property and a general description of the proposed change, the fact that the fee has to be paid. And, um, depending upon your zoning category, P D, mixed use, C U P require a little bit more than most others. But that's just going to be sort of a general paragraph. And then there would be a checklist that the city will prepare and provide to the applicant so that they, they've got the, it doesn't need to be all spelled out in the zoning ordinance, because if someday you decide, why do, why do we get this? We don't really need this at this stage of the game, then you have to change, you have to revise your zoning ordinance, not just your check list. So it's much, much more efficient for the staff, for the city, for the applicant to, uh, to be able to do it this way. Um, we thought that there might be a couple of things that might make, uh, the public hearing process flow a little bit more smoothly. For one thing, uh, for both a zoning change and a conditional use permit, which is really a zoning change when you think about it. It's no, it's no different. Uh, but you, you could, sometimes you know you, you'll need to recess a public hearing because something happens, you request more information, it's not available or whatever. Um, in your code right now, it says that you would have to re-notify everybody, just like, you know, you're starting from the beginning. Well, many cities, certainly the one I came from, if at the public hearing, you say, well, we're going to recess it to this date, you say it publicly, it's part of the record, then the re-notification is not required, okay? Saves, usually that's very acceptable to, to everyone. Save money, saves time, all kinds of things. So we think that, um, that that makes a lot of sense. Uh, when the P N Z recommends denial, an application would only come to this, to the council if the applicant makes a written request within ten days. Otherwise, it would, would not move forward. It'd be dispensed with at that point in time. And then, right now, uh, your ordinance says that a three-quarter vote of the council is required to approve a zoning change uh, over twenty percent protest, twenty percent written protest, that's in state law. But it doesn't say that for C U P and the same applies, so we just put that in there as well. That's only a change because it was kind of an omission. It's not really a new requirement. All right, so let's talk about C U Ps. Um, and zoning changes. The, the biggest s, change I think is in the, the submittal requirements, which we talked about just a minute ago. Less information is necessary from the applicant in the beginning, but not, I mean, but still plenty of information for you to make a decision on, but just not the whole, uh, set of, of requirements that is currently in place. Uh, and the review process is dictated by state law, so there's not really much that, uh, can be done there and, which is fine. For C U Ps, um, we are reducing the number that, of uses that require a C U P. And that's based upon, you know, a lot of, a lot of discussion with staff about uses and history of, of how applications have been ruled upon, et cetera. And, you know, I think, when you look at that chart, that's the existing chart. Those are, all those yellow blocks are uses requiring a C U P in those districts. Pretty, it's pretty intimidating. Um, and in some, and some of it is because of, you know, the way the zoning is structured, it's so geographical. Uh, it, it's just a, it's just a lot. And so what we're suggesting, let me make sure I got through everything on that previous slide. Well, I'll come back. Uh, so what we're suggesting is, under this new system, far fewer C U P uses. Many uses require, allowed by right, that currently require a C U P, all right? Um, relaxing the submittal requirements, we touched on that a moment ago. Uh, there is a section in there that is uses that are allowed with, without a C U P. Well, the land use table is going to take care of that now. Um, there's a lot in there about terminating a C U P, the council's involvement in that and that sort of thing, and that's still there. And, um, again, the review processes are dictated by state law, they're the same as for a zoning change, so, uh, nothing, nothing to mess with there. Okay, special use district, and Mark touched on this earlier. Uh, in your current code, there is a section for special uses. And really, there, most of those uses, I think, are, I would call them noxious, you know, feed lots and concrete stuff, you know? Uh, mining and, you know, all kinds, things like that, that, that probably are not things that, uh, you necessarily want to just permit outright. So we're suggesting, and, uh, this was one of our first discussion topics with the C R C, we're suggesting that, that there just not be special use districts. All those things, if somebody brings you one that would work well, uh, where they want to do it and they are willing to do some things to make it fit, then they could, uh, treat that as a conditional use, a C U P, instead of a special use district. So I think it, all, what it does not do is list all these things that you probably don't want anyway. So if somebody has something, they need to bring it to you specifically. The special use district process was the same as the C U P process, so, um, again, not, not what I would consider a real change. All right, when you do it, when you go through an exercise like this, one of the biggest issues is always non-conforming. What's going to happen to me? Am I going to become non-conforming? What if I am? What's, what, you know, what's my future? All right, so let's talk about that. Uh, and this would apply to non-conforming lots, non-conforming structures, non-conforming uses, and non-conforming site elements, which might be something like, uh, you know, landscaping or, uh, light pole or something. All right, so non-conforming, let's, let's all agree on the definition first. It means it's something that was legal prior to the effective date of the new ordinance that's no longer complying after its adoption, okay? So I was okay before, new ordinance, now I'm not okay. So, a non-conforming use can continue to operate after the new ordinance is adopted as long as it's not expanded or enlarged. So it's grandfathered in. Most people understand kind of what that means, grandfathered in. So, a non-conforming structure or use cannot be enlarged or expanded, which means the size of the building containing the non-conforming use cannot be enlarged or expanded. The area within a building occupied by a non-conforming use can't be expanded. If before the adoption of the ordinance, uh, I've got a non-conforming use that's, uh, taken up fifty percent of the building, it can't take up seventy-five percent of the building after the adoption of the ordinance. It can keep its fifty, but it can't expand. Um, if there, if it's an issue of seating capacity or parking or loading, also can't expand once the, uh, because that's just further supporting a use that's no longer allowed. And not only supporting, but, you know, uh, you know, giving it more, uh, more leeway. And then, uh, you could not build a new structure to accommodate a non-conforming use. And I'll, I'll touch on that in one second.
If the person that has a non-conforming use wants to sell, can it continue on as a non-conforming use?
Mm-hmm, yeah, and I'll, and I'll get to under the, to a little bit of that in just a second. So this doesn't mean that a non-conforming building can't be repaired to keep it safe, because the idea is not to let it fall down on, on somebody and injure them. Doesn't mean that a lot, a parking lot can't be maintained, doesn't mean that landscape material can't be replaced, all right? So anything that's just really minimal kind of maintenance oriented stuff would still be allowed. Now, once a building or a use becomes conforming, so if suddenly, uh, you change the use in there, then it can't go back to the use that's, that is no longer permitted. If it's abandoned for six months, so as long as it's not abandoned. If it's abandoned for six months or more, then it's not legally non-conforming any longer. So, uh, normally what happens is a city will look at, uh, utility usage to make that determination. And I'm, I'll be the first to admit that that can be challenging, but that's, that's kind of how the ball starts rolling. Um, a non-conforming use or structure can be rebuilt or reinstated if the cause of its discontinuous, continuance was fire, flood, some kind of natural disaster, something like that. Uh, if the amount of damage or destruction to the building doesn't exceed fifty percent of its fair market value, then you can restore it to its previous, uh, configuration. And that has been through the courts already, so that's a real, um, that's a real number. Um, now, your code provides for reconstruction to occur as long as it kicks in within six months of the event that caused the destruction, all right? With some exceptions, for example, if your insurance company is still, you know, hasn't cut you the check or whatever, you can come in and make that known and, uh, you know, appeal that six month, just as an administrative process. Uh, and also provided that the reconstruction doesn't create a gr, a greater non-conformity than existed prior to the damage. So you can't expand the building, all right? You can build it back to its previous configuration. All right?
We're going to ask questions again.
Uh-huh, and we're not too far off, I believe. Then, uh, it just, we just wrap up the code with some, uh, just some standard administrative topics and provisions. Uh, we do have, uh, an appendix included this time around, that just is graphic depiction of some concepts and, and terms and that sort of thing. These are just a few of them, there's more. And, uh, also, one of the things we wanted to, to, uh, bring to your attention is that in our discussion with, with the, the review committee, uh, the concept of a traffic impact analysis was, uh, was brought up. And a, a traffic impact analysis, or T I A, is an evaluation of the effect that a proposed project will have on the surrounding transportation system, okay? Has to be prepared by an engineer, you know, a legitimate engineer. And it has to, uh, in it describe methodology, conclusions, and recommendations, all right? So it's just not like, well, this is, you know? Well, anyway, recommendations is, is an important part of it, all right? And what it, what would be looked at or reviewed would be net new trips. So that's the number of new trips per day or in the morning or evening peak hour that will be added to the roadway system by the new development minus the number that would be taken off the roadway system when the old development goes away, all right? So that's net, net new trips. Now, the criteria that we, that we're suggesting, and this is after talking with the, uh, folks at Kimbley Horn that do this sort of thing all day long, is, uh, if a proposed development would generate a thousand or more net new trips per day or a hundred and fifty or more in the morning or evening peak hours. And there are accepted industry standards about calculating those things. So I, what I would envision is a worksheet and, uh, there is a, there is a source that is acceptable in the industry. The Institute of Transportation Engineers has a very detailed table that talks about, uh, just a, a variety of uses and what kinds of, uh, traffic they generate, twenty-four hours, peak hour, uh, all that. And that, it's readily available. So, um, then all the, all the, an applicant would do would be to fill out this worksheet, because they're going to come in knowing how many square feet, how many residential units, whatever, what type of use. They're going to know that when they come in. And if they exceed these thresholds, then they have to go through a more thorough, more comprehensive process to tell you how they're going to accommodate that additional traffic. If they don't bust the thresholds, okay, move on. Um, so that's how that would work. Parking, uh, wanted to talk to you about our general approach to the, to the issue of parking. What we wanted to do was update your ratios to reflect current practices and uses and that sort of thing. Fill in the gaps between new uses and the old set of uses. Um, yeah, provide specific ratios for activities to have unique parking. Like daycares have a whole different sort of a parking need, schools have a different sort of parking, restaurants are different from offices, okay? So taking all those things into account. And then, uh, there was a little bit of discussion about bicycle parking, and the thought was that those, that issue would be, uh, first addressed or first approached, uh, in the overlays for the downtown and River Corridor guidelines, all right? So we're not going to make those a part of the code, the overall code at this point. So I just wanted to just, uh, give you just a few examples here. And the reason I put this first table in here was because it's not always a ratio that's calculated just on a square footage of something, all right? So if you can see here, the first ratio for auto repair and service, it's actually calculated based upon the number of bays, repair bays in a facility. Uh, for banks, it is a really a square footage sort of a calculation. For car washes, again, bays, but a different type of bay. And a full service car wash is different from a self-service car wash, so, so is the parking ratio. Uh, and temple, mosque, church, place of worship, that's really based upon a number of seats, okay? So just letting you know that it's, uh, we, we took all those things into account, the unique characteristics of the, of the uses in question. So I wanted to point out just a few, uh, parking standards to you, and we're very close to the end, my, of my part anyway, which is the hairy part. Uh, the first, uh, first set of uses in the, in the gray or blue, whatever that is, are all office type uses. For a bank, um, we're suggesting one per three hundred. Now, your current code, interestingly enough, does not even include bank as a use. I would assume that it's been con, considered an office, but we're calling it out now and we're, uh, we're basing parking on the square footage. Um, there is an office, uh, ratio right now in the code, and it's one per three hundred, and we're not suggesting change to that. Veterinary services are currently required to park at one per one hundred and fifty, which seems pretty, huh, seems like a lot of parking for a veterinarian. Um, so we're suggesting that it'd be more like other types of office uses. And the exception to that, uh, set, that office standard would be for medical, where we are thinking one per two hundred as opposed to one per one fifty. So that, that's the suggestion that's coming forward to you at this point in time, alright? So then we get into retail, and, um, right now, your code requires one space for every two hundred and fifty square feet of, uh, retail area, and then allows you to net out or subtract out, um, non-public areas, uh, restrooms, offices and storage, and park those at one per seven fifty. The one change that we're suggesting is that the retail be parked at one per three hundred instead of one per two fifty for centers that are up to three, up to a hundred thousand square feet in size. And then, for, uh, retail businesses that are selling large items like furniture and appliances and that sort of thing, one per four hundred, and that's what your code normally, uh, are, already requires. Now, we had quite a bit of discussion with the, uh, the CRC about multifamily parking. Uh, right now, your code is basically two spaces per unit, and that's really regardless of type, what type of residential unit it is. So there was some discussion about, we do really need two spaces for a one-bedroom unit and, and that sort of thing. So where we landed after surveying some other cities, uh, was one point five spaces for a one-bedroom, because there might be two people living in some of the one-bedrooms, two for two-bedroom, and then two and a half for three or more bedrooms. So that's what we're suggesting as a revised ratio instead of two. And when a developer comes in, when they get financing for a project, they know how many one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom units they're gonna get, pretty much. Doesn't mean they might do a little tweaking, you know, towards the end. But they, but they know, because that's how, that's part of the information that a lender's gonna require. So, uh, that, that should work, we feel. We also mentioned, because what happens a lot of times is in a mo- in an apartment complex, somebody will haul their boat in and take up four spaces or something like that. So we added a requirement that those kinds of things be in a separate area, and that that parking not cor- count towards the minimum. Alright? So, I don't know how you wanna handle discussion, Mayor?
The, uh, I, I would just say whoever has a question, a response. And, uh, Monica, for your back sake, do you wanna sit down?
I'll take it. Here's what helps, if I can put my knee up on some.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. What questions do you have? Clarification?
I'm gonna let you call on...
Yeah, Delai?
Well, since we were just on this, I'm curious about the one point five. If you're a one-bedroom and you get one and a half spaces.
Well, most likely there's gonna be more than one, one-bedroom, so.
Based on the total.
It's the total. And, and if it's a, if it's one point five, you end up with a point five.
Another question here. Um, going back to the, the early part of the slides, and discussion of a tree preservation ordinance. Uh, as an architect who's worked with tree ordinances in other cities, those are, the ones I've worked with in Austin and San Antonio are extremely complicated. And, uh, and honestly not sure what kind of true benefit they're providing. Um, so before we open that door, I wanna be sure that we're aware of what we're getting into. I could see the need for a very special or very majestic tree to want to be preserved. Um, and, and maybe that's something that we can focus on. But, the, the tree ordinances I've had to work with in the past have just been, you know, again, just extremely cumbersome and time-consuming, and to me, not benefiting much for anyone.
Let me, let me ask you one thing about that. If we had some form of licensing for people to work on trees, and some kind of requirement for training and education. The reason I say that is because we've got a real problem here of people cutting trees and ending up killing them. And, um, so I, you know, natural beauty is so important to us, to this area, that I've, I've thought, well, uh, that's a possibility.
Well, I mean, I, you know, I guess, I hate to see a beautiful tree cut down as much as anybody else does. But, um, in, you know, in, in the architectural and construction and development world, you know, sometimes that, you know, that has to be done often. And, you know, I just, I don't, I'm like, I guess I'm not saying that I don't see a need for it at all, but I, I do concern that it can get very subjective and, and also just really cumbersome to nav- to navigate and to maintain and, and enforce.
So Garrett, just as a suggestion, I'm, for clarity for our, our purposes, so the difference would be maybe in San Antonio or Austin or other places, you have to do a tree survey, measure it at six feet above the ground, and then you've got to mitigate it on some sort of ratio with new trees and so on.
Right.
And so what you're, yeah, so what you're suggesting is maybe at least a first step here would be to look at your heritage trees, something that's over a certain caliber.
Right.
And, you know, that you do what you can, preserve that and that piece of it, but not this full-scale land that we might see in other cities.
Right.
Or tree, which you see in some cities, yeah.
Uh, I mean, yes, as example, there have been some trees that I've seen get taken down here in the community that I wished hadn't been. And I wish there would have been some way to avoid that, or make a developer owner try harder to save it. Uh, for example, the empty lot down next to Great Juice has a beautiful oak smack in the middle of it. Right now, there's nothing that allows us to have somebody preserve that, uh, which I think, you know, that would be a good idea. But at the same time, all the exposure I've had to tree preservation ordinances have been, been, at the end of the day, yeah, just very expensive, very cumbersome, and not very helpful.
Was, uh, just a comment that, you know, you were gonna take over interviews. It's not a part of the W ordinance, it could be a rest of the development. You don't have a warning that...
Certainly, we're making notes of all of the comments today, so when we get to that point with the CRC, we'll work that into the discussions with them.
Could that be a, uh, condition that planning and zoning could put on, on improving a project? If they were a majestic tree in the middle of a lot, they can't cut it down? There's a condition that, and planning their, their permission to go, or permit to go ahead? Does planning and zoning forbid it?
The city attorney is that you guys don't add PD, uh, I think. Um, 'cause we talked about something similar.
I thought that up. I was on planning and zoning, Chick-fil-A went in, and there's a beautiful oak there that was needed trimming, it was draping on the ground. But we said, "Don't take that tree down if you want this permit."
There you, uh, under the new code, uh, you can, okay, just looking at a... So, you can certainly, uh, do that.
Wish we'd thought about that in regard to Hobby Lobby. Okay, another comment, question? Okay, Mr. Walker?
As far as the building setback in height ratio, does that have anything to do with topography? You showed on a flat plane, but if everything's downhill and you got residential, they still need that distance?
Uh, that, yeah, it doesn't really, um, it doesn't really account for topographical changes. Doesn't mean that someone couldn't come to the ZBDA and make a request. That would be a very appropriate type of request if you did ZBDA.
Okay, and the other one is, uh, for nonconforming use, the amount of damage exceeding fifty percent. Where's fifty percent coming from? Is that the number?
Fair market value, and it's, I mean, there's a legal way of, of making those determinations.
Raise that number instead of leaving it at fifty percent?
That's up to you. Fifty percent has survived, survived court challenges. I don't know if greater percentages have or not, but I'm sure that some city attorney would have to look into.
So would that mean if, if there was a fire and it was a total loss on the structure, you could not come back?
That's what that would mean. Back in the previous configuration, you have to come back as a conforming structure.
I'd like to give the property an opportunity to come back. I don't want us to say, "Burned down, you can't come back."
Yeah, I, I kind of agree. I think there should be, uh, a little bit more, uh, understanding, especially in a catastrophic event that was outside of anybody's control.
Uh, I've got a couple of questions. When, going into this, one of the things we're looking at is, how can we get more housing for, uh, I'm not gonna say low income per se, but housing that young adults can get into, et cetera? And we talked about the possibility of doing three homes on one lot, essentially as like a shotgun, but it could be nice and go two stories. Is there provision for that here?
Three, uh, different structures?
Yes.
I think the only way you could do that would be, um, well, you could do it through a PD. And you can go in and make, make provision for, for a home development like that if you wanted to.
Like we talked about with the tiny homes?
Right, exactly. Yes, uh, or, I mean, it could be with the family, if it's one ownership, and they...
No, it, I, I mean, I, I think what we're looking at is, or the possibility of three homeowners, three homes on that lot. We just, the cost of, of, of land is such that so many people just can't get into a home.
Would R E M district allow for that, for tiny homes?
Tiny homes, I, I'll tell you what, the state of that industry right now, the only definition I've been able to find for a tiny home is no more than four hundred square feet. And so I feel like the best way to address somebody that wanted to do something like that was with a PD, because I can't sit down and, I don't know how to write, write the stipulations.
The other thing that you're gonna run into with that is financing. Unless you people are paying cash, you're not gonna find financing for something like that. It doesn't work. They don't, you can't have three people own the dirt, and then they each own their individual residence?
Been done in a lot of metropolitan areas. It's essentially like brownstones.
It's a, it's a, it's essentially a condo situation where the, the land is owned in common and the...
I don't think financial institutions are there yet on, we think, well, as far as tiny homes go. I mean, condo, yes, we all, we know what that is, townhomes, it does work.
Well, tiny homes are, you don't have a secondary market, number one.
But what, okay, I'm not talking about specifically tiny homes. There are ways in a, in a lot of cities where, like I say, one lot, you've got three homes. They, they can be nice and everything else, and you've got enough square footage, uh, and you can go two stories or whatever. So that's what I'm talking about. Tiny homes, I know you, in terms of financing and everything else, that's...
Wouldn't you just classify that as a townhome?
Townhomes have to be attached, share a wall.
Yeah, this would, the mixed, right, on the, uh, when you've got garden homes and so forth.
Yeah, but those, those, it would still be one unit per lot.
The lots could be smaller.
Lots could be smaller.
All right, now, is that the other, is that the other possibility?
Well, we actually, we...
In this system, to have some smaller lots?
We, we actually were in and reduced lot sizes down through this, or suggesting that. Four thousand square feet may still sound too big though for what you're talking about, but, uh, a- again, that's why it almost sounds like what you're talking about needs to be tailored to a specific...
Yeah, I, I think that a development catered toward that might make more sense. But trying to put three residences on four thousand square feet doesn't sound like a desirable...
But I'm, I'm talking about a, a, uh, full s- a full-size lot. Going to the full-size lot, you've got three homes on there. Possibility. Now, the other thing, the other thing I was thinking about was just the ability to, to accommodate some smaller lots for single homes.
Land.
Yeah.
Mayor, one oth- one other thing that we've, we've worked with some developers that are now starting to develop across the country. And what they're developing is a single piece of property with multiple houses on the one piece of property. Um, but that, it may be a, it, it may be a, a larger property that has twenty homes on it, on a single piece of property, and what they're finding is there's a market for people that want to have that nice residential unit, but not ha- and then all of the property is in common under the single, single ownership. And it's, it's essentially a condo situation that it's become. But when we've talked to those developers about the best way to accommodate the development of their product, they've said that they always go through a PD process, because that's been the process where they can set the standards for what works best for them, and somebody else isn't trying to define something that they might not be able to work with.
Yeah, and, and I, I underst- my time's up. I understand that, uh, it, it, it may well be, I mean, we'd have to know if the market is here in Kerrville for that, obviously. But it's, it's, I just think we need to look at lots of possibilities, how we can get folks in home.
And one option is, see if people come to you with that kind of a request, and if they do, then let's sit down and fix our zoning ordinance so they don't have to go through this extra step in order to do this. That's, a lot of times, that's how those things happen.
On that, PD is a minimum of five acres, is that correct? Have to have a development that's five acres of law.
Yeah, the one, the one way I have seen, I, I hate, people have to skirt the process, but I have seen, uh, a situation where an applicant will come to the council and request a waiver of that provision. And then, if they get that waiver, then come in and come through the whole process, just like it wasn't there. I don't like it when that happens, but...
Waiver, waiver of which provision, five acres?
The minimums, the minimum acres required.
That, that's gonna be in the thing that that's a, a waiverable thing? Not telling us how to skirt around it, right?
So, but, but along, along that line, one thing, again, we're working in a community right now that has no greenfield area, they don't have big properties. They don't have five, ten-acre sites left to develop in their community. And so a lot of what they're doing is redevelopment. And in their case, they had a five-acre minimum for PDs, and they're saying some of these redevelopment sites and infill sites are so complicated that it's almost impossible to develop them within our existing standards. So they're considering eliminating that five-acre minimum. But there's a whole other set of issues that you run into when you do that, because then everybody who wants to skirt the system can come in with an application for a PD, so...
Remember, P is not supposed to be about scurrying the system.
Exactly.
It's supposed to be about a better lot. I, I understand.
This, I, I, I know my time's up, but, Mark, my idea was maybe creating a compound for the city council member.
I'll bring that up with the CRC.
And staff is suggesting that maybe mixed use might be a way, there might be a way through the mixed use of the district to, uh, accommodate what you're talking about, maybe?
But it sound, it sounds like, I've heard a couple of comments related to the housing that we maybe need to come back to the committee and discuss a little bit more ways to accommodate some creative products without people having to jump through a lot of hoops to be able to do it. And so we'll, we'll continue to look at those and bring some to the committee.
One of my concerns is this summer, we had houses that were built in forties, fifties and sixties, barely updated. People were putting two hundred thousand dollar price on them and getting it. That in itself just prices out some folks wanting, you know, to get a home.
Well, Phil, something is changing, uh, and it's changing pretty rapidly. Affordable housing is not homeownership. It's gonna be more leasing for the tenant landlord situation in dense populations. But I think, you know, people qualifying today for those kind of things, very challenging.
The price is high, so what used to happen, I mean, after World War II, they, they developed all these small homes, small lots.
all these small homes, small lots. Our code can allow for that possibility, because that's, that's a prime way of getting, we just need land, obviously, but...
Well, I don't know what everyone else's opinion is. Five thousand square feet is a small lot from where I come from, um, doesn't mean we couldn't do a smaller one. Patio home lot, we've got four thousand. I think the town home lot's three thousand, but those are different products, admittedly. So it, you know, it's possible, maybe we have room for another zoning category, you know, that's even smaller. You know, part of it is the width, it's the configuration of the lot, it's not just its size, uh, 'cause, you know, if you get too narrow, then, you know, of the kind of a house that, uh, somebody's gonna want in, so.
There's all kinds of things, but...
Well, just keep in mind, what Mr. Waller's talking about is we're putting them in somebody in an apartment, if we can put them in something that's a home, I'm sure they, it makes for a better community. Um, but that's not really my question. So the nonconforming part, um, I had a couple of questions. One is, is there an, is there any appeal process for a landowner that is currently conforming, and then we're gonna sweep through and say, you're nonconforming? Do they have a way of appealing that switch over?
Well, rezone is one. Question, how is that they need to continue doing what they're doing? Would it, uh, uh, it may depend upon whether they're used or whether it's a, um, structure issue or just what. I'm going to look to see, I feel like I have seen in some, somebody's code, uh, a, the ability to do an appeal to the nonconforming designation, and I think I know where, how it was done, but I'm gonna check on it, so I'll promise you that we will check on that.
That'd be nice to see. And then the other is, um, again, along the same lines, but what, what's, I know it's crystal ball stuff, but what's your expectation about after we're all said and done? What type of impact are we having where nonconforming, like, what percentage of properties are, are expecting?
So we, we don't have that final answer, because we're continuing to try. Keep in mind that the number one goal was that there would be zero nonconformities as a, as a result of this. So, uh, are we going to reach zero? I, I don't think so, but what we're doing is going through and trying to go through several phases to eliminate every nonconformity we can. I can tell you, we, we found some things that were nonconforming before that are now conforming, and I think that's part of the goal as well. And until we can get further down the road and continue to make tweaks to, uh, the, a, a map that we've started to develop, we want to get that thing as far as we can to eliminate nonconformities before we bring it out.
We can have some sort of, before adoption of whatever we finish with, we can have something like that?
Yeah, we'll have something that says this, and, and that's, that's part of the, we think it's extremely important to, you know, get with the property owners and the public meeting. One of the key things is we want to set something up to where people can get to the level of their individual property and have an understanding of what can they do today and what will they be able to do in the future. Whether that's something we need to do interactively, we're, we're still working on that.
Okay, and then a quick, uh, well, one, you talked about water protection, fuel, stuff like that. Are, are we suggesting that we might add requirements above and beyond whatever the state's doing? Or are we, I mean, are we gonna get involved?
There's some requirements in your ordinance already with regard to setback from the edge of the, of the, so we were just, uh, putting those in effect for additional uses of the same character.
Back to the tree thing, not to reopen it, but how do, how do communities in Texas, a kind of a property rights state?
How do they handle that whole...
Telling me what to do with trees that are on my property? How, how do they get through that? Give me one example, like...
Well, I mean, in the community I came from, and this is very unique to the metroplex, we didn't have a tree preservation ordinance, but, uh, we did usually have a tree survey, and our staff person, who was a landscape architect, worked very, 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 very one-on-one with, uh, with folks to, uh, get them to, you know, we understood some stuff, it wasn't worth saving if it was in bad condition and all that, but they, but it was a very intense one-on-one kind of process to get them to save the trees where it was possible. We understood that there's trees smack dab in the middle of a place that, you know, your buildable area is probably not gonna, I mean, make them not take it down, but we did work with them to try to not take others.
And the, the main, the main thing that communities do that have tree preservation ordinances, and it varies widely as to, as to, uh, how they, how they set it up, but oftentimes there'll be something related to mitigation go along with it. So it's not, you can't eliminate a heritage tree. Well, sometimes they do say you've, you've gotta do everything you can not to eliminate a heritage tree, but, uh, the key is if you eliminate these trees, you have to replace on the site somewhere with this, you know, this many caliber inches of trees. So you're, you're not telling them, no, you just can't do it. You're saying, okay, we need something in return to, to re-vegetate the site to some extent.
More question on special use, special use. You said it's not spelled out, I know that it gives you flexibility, but that puts you in the position of too much personal interpretation.
Okay, are you talking about the, the elimination of that special use district or specific use district? Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Uh, normally, there's a section in a, in a code, and there is, in the current code, that says any use that's not listed will be considered through the conditional use. So it's really essentially that. No, no zoning ordinance is gonna anticipate every possible use there is, so there's always something that's not on the list, and that's how you go through that. These use, treat it just the same way. If you, if you look at the uses that are in your code now, in that specific use, I don't think you'll be disappointed to see them go. Like I said, if somebody brings one of them to you, and they can do it in a way that will work well, that'll fit in with what's going on, that's right, that will contribute to your community.
Are there uses that are, that are not allowed? You mentioned like P I. That, what you're saying is that could actually come before P and Z and could be approved?
Future or now?
Future.
In the future, if, they would have to ask. Do you even often say no?
Right, but right now, they can't do it.
Now, now they would come to you and request a specific use. It's not that they can't request it, it's right there, it says they can request it. So what we're saying is get rid of that list of uses, treat them like CUPs, just like we do every other office.
So...
Any...
Five floors a CUP, or?
Anyone that's not in the list already.
Oh, it's not in the list anywhere in anywhere at all? Okay, all right.
Doesn't a CUP kind of imply that there's a chance you can have that use, whereas if it's blank, it's saying, no, you can't have that?
I think what a CUP implies is maybe.
More than likely, you're gonna have some conditions applied to getting approved.
It's not a for sure. All it says is here's where you can and cannot ask for it.
I'm just saying, if it's on the chart, if it's blank, that's stronger, that's a no.
And so all those, you know, those, what I would call noxious uses, they have to finally listed. It would be interesting if you went back and looked.
Our code review committee members who are here, do you have any questions? All right, I, I...
One thing that we talked about at the committee was trying to get a comparison of the old and new CUP.
Yeah, that's what Mark was mentioning, that we're working on that analysis right now. It's very, very detailed, but we are working, and we do want you to see that before.
That'll come back to the committee before.
Yeah.
On the manufactured homes, what?
Um, okay, manufactured homes are really allowed anywhere, you can do any other family type of home. They have to be constructed to state standards, and you can't, I don't know, am I right about this? You can't really say no just because it wasn't, some of the components were, you know, partially fabricated offsite, so unless they need all the components, it's a state.
It's going to be, so it would be the D, or an HOA that is going to say no.
Uh, probably so, yeah, 'cause I don't, it doesn't appear that the city has the ability to write, who am I saying that correctly?
Manufactured or modular?
Manufactured.
Manufactured or what?
Modular.
Um, some manufactured homes need...
Uh, okay.
Modular home, which is built offsite, needing the current building, would be allowed.
I'm, I'm ready to hear that part.
Yeah, we'll be sure our definitions are correct and...
I have a question on the R one versus R one A, or accessory dwelling. So with the R one A, does that mean accessory dwellings are not allowed on R one?
That's, uh, I think it's a CUP use in all, I have to look at the land use, um, chart. Yeah, since C, it's a CUP use in all.
So is, so is that designation or that difference based on lot size primarily?
Yeah, the same size of lot.
Okay, I guess, I'm, I'm trying to understand if, if I have, you know, what's gonna determine whether my five thousand square foot lot is R one or R one A?
Well...
How am I gonna know whether or not I can build a garage apartment on that?
We currently have the, those two zoning districts in the current code. Uh, so just like any other zoning, it's what is on that property, that neighborhood. Uh, we have several neighborhoods zoned R one A to allow that accessory dwelling in it currently. So this really just mirrors that and clarifies that it can be detached or attached to the main structure.
Does that answer your question, though? I mean, how, how is that decision being made, the R, between R one and R one A?
I don't think there's any change.
If I have an R one site based on what we've decided through this ordinance's changes, and I decide I want to build a garage apartment, do I have to come into planning and zoning, get it rezoned to a one A, or how does that have to work?
Um, yeah, CUP.
Okay.
Yeah, I guess so. Um, yeah, I just, I, I, I think that, you know, a couple of things come into play when we're talking about affordable housing, being able to lease an apartment to somebody till they can afford to buy their own home, uh, you know, aging parents being able to have, I, I, you know, I can see a, a need for that, and it's, to me, it seems like it's, it's, we're making that more restrictive, but that's just maybe what it appears.
Yeah, I mean, I think our intent was to make it less restrictive, allowing it to actually be a separate structure, not requiring the unit to be part of the main house.
Okay.
So the only thing that's, uh, we, we allow you to now have even a separate structure, so, you know, whoever's out there can live their life and they're not intruding upon what's going on in your own home, but, uh, we didn't want the, the whole backyard taken up too much with that, with the, the extra building, so that's the trade-off for allowing it to be freestanding. And I don't know that, that there has been any intentional change of an R one A property, a current R one property to an R one property.
And so it just, the steps that we've gone through in looking at existing zoning and future zoning, if something was R one, we now have a R one district that pretty much parallels what was allowed before, and those properties that were in R one before are being shown in R one in the future. R one A, it's the same thing, so if somebody already has R one A, and so we're not going in and saying, well, I think maybe this one should be R one instead of R one A, or that should, we're looking at what people currently have and trying to keep that in form.
I guess that's why, that was under the impression that you had gone through an analysis and started deciding what was gonna be R one and what was gonna be R one A.
What, what, what we've done is if something, and, and the residential are the best example of where we were able to align things, because we've designed district, you, your residential was not necessarily broken out geographically, it was in residential district, so it was much easier to make that transition to a new district and just put the same standards for the most part in place, or even to Monica's point, make it a little, uh, uh, easier to put a separate unit in R one A for that accessory residential unit, which you can't do today, just thinking, we're trying again to solve this bigger issue with affordability.
Any other questions, or?
Question, in residential estate, it says it's one acre lots, is that one acre minimum?
Mm-hmm.
And then also on the chain link screening, how does that work? It says chain link is an acceptable screening fence, and then it says no chain link with slats except in PI. Does that mean chain link with slats, is, that's, you, it has to have slats to be a screen, right? It can't be just chain link by...
Uh, no, I think the intent was for there to be landscaping with the chain link.
Okay, okay.
So you could have, you can have chain link...
With landscaping.
With landscaping, and then you can have it without landscaping with slats in certain districts.
Okay, all right.
But the chain link and landscaping both connect. Gotta be with landscaping. Keep in mind that the entire description is not in it.
I think the procedure calls for, uh, Mr. Waller to, uh, close out your part of the meeting, and then I will...
Yeah, sorry, we actually have a couple more slides. Sorry about that.
Okay, okay.
Oh, we lost it.
Okay, the implied promise from the consultants is that with this new, new, uh, system, planning and zoning will have it easy peasy. Is that right?
Yeah.
That's Monica's process, or promise.
And if they say no, you're off the hook.
Yeah.
Unless the applicant comes forward.
Okay, so next steps, um, I guess number one, we, we have taken note of all of the things, all of the questions as well as concerns that were raised, clarifications, so that we can bring those things back to the committee, uh, because I think there are several things we heard where we need additional committee discussion, uh, some options for them to be able to get uh, the right recommendation in place. Uh, so what we will be doing is making refine, uh, refinements, uh, to this ordinance, incorporating P and Z and city council direction. Really, a lot of it is going to be more coming up with some additional options to bring back to the committee. Uh, we will be preparing that draft zoning map along with that matrix that we talked about that shows the comparison of what people can do on their property with existing zoning today versus what they'd be able to do with a different zoning use. We're trying to be able to identify that by specific properties and even identify the number of properties affected, uh, to your point, Councilman Barodi, of, uh, understanding a little bit more of the impacts, uh, citywide that this is having. Uh, so we'll be bringing back, uh, that to the code review committee in meeting number five. That meeting is on May ninth at four P M. And then the community open house is scheduled for May sixteenth, that's, uh, five to seven P M. At the Dieter Center. So we really appreciate the time that you set aside today for this, and I think we've got some good direction.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, if there's no other business, that is a motion to adjourn planning and zoning. That motion, that second?
Second.
That motion, the second, all in favor? Right hand, passes, five zero, adjourn.
At six eighteen?
Um, we are adjourned.